May we entertain a motion to move out of executive session, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our February 7th meeting. Would you please stand with us and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, the United States of America, the free and public, the rich and the poor, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Knowing of no alterations, may we have a motion, please, to accept the agenda for tonight?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor? Okay, agenda stands as read. In each meeting, we give the public an opportunity to address the board. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on, and we will ask, well, we did, I think we did Thomas first last, oh, it looks like you're ready to go first. Okay?
So, good evening, Board members. Our Titan community has been enjoying the beginning of our second half of the school year. For seniors, this puts the reality of graduation just around the corner. We've already had an assembly discussing caps and gowns and senior trip plans. But enough of that. Our students still have places to go and people to see and things to report on. Our Titan academic teams have been competing in several tournaments, many of them leading up to state and national championships. Math leagues has several top performances, with many heading to the All-Star County Meet in March, as well as the State Meet in April. Science Olympiad has some individual top medals at the regional tournament this past weekend in Brockport. Speech and debate team has several students who qualified for the state tournament in April, and there's an upcoming national qualifier tournament. The Sparks team is busily getting a robot assembled and functional, so it's ready to compete in the upcoming Finger Lakes Regional Tournament at RIT. Masterminds JV team is doing very well, winning most of its matches, placing in near top of its league. Finally, Mock Trial is busily preparing to defend our last year's county championships. We are in the final week of fundraising money for the West Webster Fire Department. We have officially exceeded the $5,000 amount for our Assistant Principal, Mrs. Clark, and Librarian, Mrs. Warren, to shave their heads. Additional money will also be raised with ticket sales of the hotly contested basketball game between Thomas Faculty and Webster Schrader Faculty this weekend. Several Titan artists are being recognized by RIT for their excellence in creativity in art. They are recognized with a gift certificate at RIT's University Gallery. In addition, RIT is recognizing art teachers for their outstanding work. Our own Mr. Todd Stahl is being honored for his excellence in art instruction. Our music department has been organizing an upcoming cabaret performance at Willink Middle School at 7:30 this weekend. It promises to be a show-stopping lineup. The Webster-Thomas players are rehearsing for the upcoming exciting musical production of The Wiz on March 21st through the 23rd. There are many athletic department highlights. Our JV wrestlers, with a record of 24 wins to just two losses, won the county tournament. The JV wrestling team ended their season by hosting the county tournament, and 10 wrestlers finished in the top. The varsity wrestlers are headed to sectionals, and eight wrestlers are moving on to super sectionals. The Alpine Ski Team had strong third place and second place finishes during the Slalom Ski, and Thomas Titan Hockey Players are leading Division II Class B. During an indoor track meet at Brockport, several students broke previous school records. JV and varsity cheerleaders took home first place at Victor's Cheer Spring Sports Classical Competition. Spring isn't in the air yet, but informational meetings and plans for spring sports are already underway. In addition to the athletes and musicians, Link Leaders, Rotary Interact, and National Honor Society are helping our school and community. And that's all for the update. I'll now pass over to Schrader.
Good evening, Board members. Now that the second semester is in full swing, the students of Webster-Schrader are keeping busy with many activities. This week, students have the opportunity to purchase Crush sodas or carnations in the cafeteria for $1. These crushes can be sent to any student or staff member at Schrader, and they will be handed out next Thursday on Valentine's Day. This Saturday night, there will be a benefit basketball game at Schrader, featuring multiple staff members from Schrader and Thomas High Schools. Tickets can be purchased for $5, and the proceeds will be going to the West Webster Fire Department. One of Schrader's Assistant Principals, Mr. McBride, has agreed to shave his head if we can raise over $5,000, giving students a major incentive to donate. Webster-Schrader's Science Olympiad team qualified for the state competition this past weekend, as they finished second in the Midwestern region. Each member contributed to the team's success, as many won multiple medals in the various events. We congratulate them on their accomplishments. Our speech and debate team also had another win this weekend, as they competed at Webster-Thomas, and we commend them for their continued success. The students in the Drama Department are working hard to prepare the well-known musical Footloose, which will be held during the weekend of February 28th to March 3rd. Tickets are $11 and can be purchased at any Wegmans location. There will be performances on Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night, and Sunday afternoon, and we encourage everyone to support the department and enjoy the show. As the winter sports season nears its end, the Schrader teams continue to excel. The Boys Varsity Basketball Team had a huge win against our rival Fairport last Friday night, with an exciting 69-70 victory in the second overtime. There was an outpouring of support from the entire Schrader community, and we are proud of our staff, students, and parents for their dedication. They are playing Victor tonight, as they near the end of the regular season, and we wish them the best of luck in this game. We look forward to the events that are coming up at Schrader, and we are proud of our students for successfully reaching the midway point of the year. Thank you.
Julia, I know you don't like to call attention to yourself, but didn't you do very well recently in a contest?
I guess for Science Olympiad, if that's what you're referring to?
Well, you know...
Yes, I did Dynamic Planet, which is a biotechnology event, so we know about DNA and transcription translation, so my teammate denied me one fourth place in that event. So, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, girls. Marie, would you like to make a report on PTSA?
Is this on? Is it on? Yeah, there it is. Thank you. Good evening, Board members, Superintendent Bavard, and other attendees and guests. I represent the Central PTSA, and tonight I'm highlighting two initiatives, Parent University and the Gates Organization. Parent University 2013 is this Saturday, February 9th, from 9:00 a.m. till noon at Spry Middle School. This year's theme is Parenting in the Digital Age: Intimidation or Opportunity. This annual event is sponsored by the Webster Central PTSA and the Webster Central School District. Registration begins at 8:30, and we encourage parents to attend. This year's workshops focus on empowering parents and helping us guide our children to leverage technology and use it responsibly. Parents can learn about the Khan Academy, a free and powerful online library of resources that can be utilized both at home and in the classroom. There will be two separate workshops also on utilizing technology across our school district, both demonstrating how it is used as an instructional tool in the classroom and how families can use non-biance to create and maintain a digital academic portfolio for their student and stay connected via the student and parent portals. Parents can also learn how to help children maximize technology while protecting their digital footprint by attending the "Should I Click on This?" workshop. In addition, there will be a two-hour session on what parents can do to help their preschoolers get ready for kindergarten. The Parent University workshops continue to be free and open to the public, and babysitting remains available at no charge, but a pre-registration is required. Also new for this year are a few student sessions. There's a social networking safety and a Home Alone for Kids workshop, and these classes are appropriate for children ages seven to 13. A fee of $10 per child is required to help offset the instructional costs for these children's sessions, and pre-registration is required via email due to class size limits. Parents may provide a snack for their child as well, and can register by email and provide their name, any babysitting information, and registration about children's classes by going to the websterptsaa@gmail.com address. Our Gates Organization of Parents, which stands for Gifted and Talented Education Supporters, has been busy and created a 2013 focus about what Gates' parents are hoping to see and do this year. As a restructuring effort, the Gates Steering Committee has been bolstered by the addition of several new steering committee members, and they share a commitment to the Webster Central School District, as well as a passion for public education. The group is advocating for the district to actively explore opportunities for growing the district-wide enrichment program, in hopes that Gates can be actively involved in this process. Currently, our district enjoys an expansive and rich accelerated program, the AP Program, and an array of enriched courses across all content areas at both high schools. Gates is interested in learning more about any additional opportunities that might be possible at the middle and elementary levels, specifically opportunities for interest-based learning and addressing the special needs, both curricular and social-emotional, of gifted children. The Gates Steering Committee has been busy researching best practices and what is currently working in a number of school districts within Monroe County. Plans include possible collaboration with the Penfield School District, since they have an existing gifted education department, and a similar parent committee of education supporters that goes by the acronym of PACE, P-A-C-E. In addition, Gates is talking about how they can expand by learning what parents of accelerated learners seek, for example, better addressing their children's social and emotional needs. There was a great response to a Gates' parents' survey conducted two years ago, and this will be explored once again to see, to better understand interests and gauge needs. An invitation is open to all of you, Board members and community, to attend, as well as any district staff and parents, to attend Gates' next meeting, which is going to be held Tuesday, February 12th, at 7:00 p.m. here at Spry. There will be an informal conversation centered on the topic of maximizing Webster's AP Program, foundations at every level, elementary, middle, and high school. The Gates Organization is excited to move forward with the district for the coming year. Would there be any questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, now let's hear from the WTA liaison to the board. Lisa.
Good evening, Board members. Tonight, I'm going to highlight two teachers from Plank North. First teacher, Sue Hooper. Sue's the literary specialist at Plank North, and she came to Plank North in 1994 and has been there ever since. She loves Plank North, both the students and the staff. Before coming to Webster, Sue lived and worked in New York City. She's also certified in Special Education K-12, Elementary K-6, as well as Literacy. She was a special education teacher for five years when she was in New York City at PS-163, which is located in Queens. She had a self-contained classroom with multi-handicapped students. At Plank North, not only is she the lead teacher, student intervention for Plank North, she's on the Building Advisory Committee, building Sunshine Club, as well as the WTA Exec Board Rep and Building Rep, and she also serves on the advisory for the Webster Professional Learning Community Team. Sue attended St. John's University in Queens, the home of the Red Men Basketball Team, for both her undergrad and her masters. She started teaching right out of college. Sue believes that she was born into the profession of teaching. She's always wanted to be a teacher. Sue would teach her cousin, when she was little, by the way, is a doctor in anthropology now, everything Sue learned in school that week, and she would teach the little boy her mother used to babysit as well, all those poor children. What Sue liked about teaching, besides the students and the staff, are the parents. She likes working with everyone. What Sue likes most of all, watching a kid become successful as a reader, when they were not one before. You know, when the light bulb goes off and they become hooked on reading, that's what Sue looks for. What's challenging is trying to reach the kids that have great difficulties with reading, as well as giving those students that don't seem to have the support at home for one reason or another, the support in school. What is interesting about Sue, and she's been to Disney World 14 or more times, every year throughout her childhood, her grandparents had taken her, and she's taken her own children as well. She takes her children in remembrance of her grandparents, and she feels it's a wonderful experience to share with her own kids. Her favorite villain is Maleficent from Sleeping Beauty, and her favorite princess, of course, is Sleeping Beauty. The next teacher I'm going to highlight from Plank is Bill Shoff. If you go to Room 102 at Plank North, you're going to find Bill Shoff, a published author, the leader of the school's after-school Kids Who Care program, and a beloved second-grade teacher. In 1988, Bill came to Webster and has been at Plank North ever since. He was hired as a second-grade teacher, but was moved to teach three years of fourth grade before coming back to second grade. Before obtaining his master's and his undergrad degree from SUNY Geneseo, he worked two years at Crestwood Children's Center and in the health office at Schrader High School, and he also worked at Bayview YMCA. Bill serves on the Plank North PBIS Committee, runs his after-school Kids Who Care program. The students create posters on skills, trying to get the word out about proper behavior through school announcements, skits, and videos, but most importantly, the students have fun together, creating ways to send out a positive message. Former students like to come back and visit Bill. Some have even gone on to become teachers themselves. Bill knew in his later teens that becoming a teacher was what he should do with his life. When he was taking child development at high school, they did field work at State Road in a pre-first class. He saw he could make a difference, touch students' lives, and get to the hearts of kids. What he likes about teaching, and there's a lot he likes about teaching, is when he can see on another student's face that they suddenly get a concept that they had been struggling with. Bill likes getting to know the students and talk with them about their personal interests, getting to see their personalities, interact with them during recess and occasional lunchtimes, so his experience with his students that he has with him are not just about structural learning environments, about getting to know them. Building respect and rapport with students helps them become better learners. What's challenging about teaching is the constant-changing curriculum, such as going from Collins to Colkins for English. As I had mentioned, Bill is an author. He's published three humorous children's poetry books. Several of his poems have been turned into stage productions, which have been performed at Rappa on East Main Street in Rochester. There's a show that has just concluded and unfortunately ended before this highlighting, so I couldn't share the dates and the times. That is my highlights for this evening. Are there any questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Our next activity seems to involve a number of young students, our friends of care. Colleen, I believe you'll introduce them to us.
It's my pleasure tonight to be here to celebrate a collaborative partnership between teachers and students that demonstrates our district's core beliefs that all students are invaluable. Three years ago, we began building a comprehensive 12-14 program at Schlegel Road, which this year has expanded to Willink. Our commitment is not just to have specialized programs in the district, but to ensure that all students are fully invested members of our Webster community. Tonight, I have Jessica Salvatore, Beth Keeson, Zoe, Justin, Francine Leggett, and, as you can see, many others, who are here to share one example of how teachers are collaborating to ensure that this occurs.
Good evening, everyone. I'm so honored to be here tonight to share the very special collaboration between the students in mine and Mrs. Keeson's classes. I knew when I was offered the teaching position for the 12-14 classroom that I wanted to give the students as many opportunities as possible to be active in the community and to develop relationships with other students at Schlegel. So, when Mrs. Keeson approached me to form a partnership between our classes, I was very excited. At first, we just started doing reading buddies. However, after so much success with this program, I wanted to expand it to lunch buddies and bus buddies, too. Not only has it helped my students build on and practice their friendship skills, but it has also helped them develop relationships outside of the classroom. It is so important for these children to have role models to look up to, ones that can help them learn how to follow school rules in the cafeteria, walk to their bus safely, and appreciate the value of a good book. It is even more essential for them to be able to call other students their age their friends. Myself and the other adults in the classroom are able to take a step back and let them interact together, which allows my students to continue to work on their independence. The excitement from each of them every time a buddy walks into the room, or when they see each other in the hallway, is truly special. My students love the time they spend with their buddies, and I get to see the positive impact it has on them every day. Their smiles and their growth make me a very proud teacher, and it shows me just how much they learn from their buddies. I look forward to even more success as both classrooms continue to be friends who care. And here's a short clip for you to see of students working together.
for the kids. They keep me company, and they count me if I'm sad or something like that. They're just really something special, and they're different than others, and that's okay, because we do different things, but we still like a lot of the other things. And they cheer you up when you're sad, and when you're happy, they can make you even more happy. It's a privilege to come here and read to our buddies. Being a buddy means more than the world to me. I just love it so much.
It is indeed a privilege to be here as a teacher and to observe firsthand the impact of the special partnership on my third-grade students. Through this collaborative experience, I've seen my students finding joy in taking responsibility, showing accountability, building greater self-confidence, and feeling good about helping others, while truly enjoying their time together. When asked about their buddies from Miss Salvatore's class, my students' words come from their hearts. Listen to those words now. Our buddies are good listeners. They're kind, and they're smart. They show care. It's fun to hang out with our buddies and to be a good friend. After a while of working together, it feels like there's a bond between our buddy classes. What heartfelt words from our students, and what a wonderful community of friends. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Justin Burkhold, and I'm in third grade at Schlegel Road School. Working with our buddies in Miss Salvatore's class has been a phenomenal experience. I can remember when Jacob and Marty held my hand going to lunch, and when I got to help push Isaac's wheelchair to the bus. I've learned that everyone is different, and that you can help people in many ways.
My name is Zoe Gilson, and I love being a reading buddy. I love seeing our buddies learning, and they teach me stuff they know, too. Everyone is perfect in their own way. Something I'll always remember from our buddy time is when Marty took my hand and started showing me her dance moves. Working with our buddies makes me feel good. I'm doing something that I know is right, and it helps make the world a better place.
Wow, what a moment. This definitely goes in my top 10. I am so proud of everyone that's here this evening, and I know many families are at home watching TV, but as the principal at Schlegel, this is my dream, to have all the children interacting in so many different ways and accepting each other. Miss Salvatore and Mrs. Keeson, I truly appreciate the relationship that the two of you have built, and I know with Miss Salvatore being her first year, we're very pleased, aren't we, Mrs. Keeson? Very much, and we are, when I stop and think about the fact that at Schlegel, we talk a lot about how we care. The students care, the families care, the staff members care, and I think this illustrates truly what it means to make a difference in our world. So, what I would like to do is ask all of the children behind me to stand up, because this is their famous moment on TV in Webster, and give a little wave, stay standing, though. And then I'd like all of our families in the audience over this way, if you could please stand, because without your support and your caring about our kids, we wouldn't be able to do this without you. So, let's give them a round of applause.
I have to thank the board, Adele, Shelley, Colleen, Marjorie. You guys have been fantastic to work with, and this is really part of my vision as a building administrator, and so thank you for this opportunity, and be watching, because we'll have more things to share with you as the future comes before us. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't go away, don't go away, please. Board members, anything? Any comments?
All my kids are growing up. Can I pick these? She wants to be a parent, I want to be a parent.
Well, before you leave, we do have a token to show our appreciation. We have a Webster Schools Proud bumper sticker, and we have keychains that say "Achieve", "Believe", and why are my glasses not working right? Imagine, Believe, and Achieve. So, we will give, Justin and Zoe will give you these, and Beth and Jessica will give you a whole bunch more, so you can give to all the kids in the class. Time, you'll take those?
Yeah.
All right.
What we try to do is highlight these celebrations of excellence, and it's just so exciting to see this come together and to have all the parents be here in support of it, and it's connected to the instructional report, because we're going to be talking about the exciting things we're doing for, in our special ed program. So, thank you so much for giving us this report, for coming out and support. We appreciate everything that you've done. So, great report, great celebration. Thanks, everybody.
Congratulations. Congratulations. So, let's have... So let's have all our tenured people, and Gary, or it's probably Scott today, Brian, and Carmen, or is it you? Okay. Why don't we bring Sarah and Mark and Kaple? Come on up.
Everybody come on up.
Yeah.
We're not scary, John. We're friendly, Josh.
I'm, it's a pleasure to be here tonight to celebrate Sarah Nasser's, used to be Sarah Nasser, now she's Sarah Fuller. Tonight, we are very proud of what you've done for our school. I have known Sarah for a long time, longer than she knows, because I knew her as a high school athlete at Bishop Carney High School, and her coach was a good friend of mine, and he always mentioned to me about this. Sarah Nasser, she's a great kid. She has it together on the floor, she has it together in the classroom and in the community. She was, as I said, she was a well-respected athlete, and she is our district's adaptive PE teacher. She leaves a mark in many of our buildings. She makes a great connection with her students. They love PE, and they love Sarah. She has the respect and admiration for the work, she has the respect and admiration for her work from her peers, her colleagues, and administrators. She helps make Webster special, and Sarah, thank you for all you do, and we are very fortunate to have you working here in Webster.
Do some certificate for her right there, I think. Is that yours, Sarah?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate this, and I'm honored to be receiving tenure tonight. It is a great opportunity to continue working for Webster Central School District. I've met so many great people and have made so many amazing relationships, and I've learned a lot in the past three years, and I'm very excited to continue working for the Webster Central School District. So thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board of Education and Superintendent Bavard. It's certainly my honor to be bringing to you tonight Kaple Das and recommending him for tenure for science. There's so many things to say, and I'll try and keep it brief, but it goes back, three years ago, I can remember getting a phone call from one of our colleagues, actually somebody you guys all know very well as well, because he said, "Be here in Webster." Mr. Pat Moriarty gave me a call, and he said, "I have got a candidate for a position in your building that you really have to take a look at." And we did, and we took a look at Kaple, along with many other candidates, with a very rich candidate pool, and lo and behold, we definitely chose Kaple. And looking back, we absolutely made the right decision. He has so many things to offer, and he has actually been in three different buildings in the past three years. He's been with us at Willink, he's been over here at Spry, and he's also been at Thomas High School, and he's taught a variety of different courses in each of our different buildings. He is flexible, versatile, collaborative, and his depth of science expertise is amazing. He's able to bring science to life in the classroom and guides our students to apply their learning to the real-world applications. I can remember two years ago, walking around with, and both of us seeing Kaple in action as he was taking a current event and turning our young students into field scientists and asking them what they would do to help solve the challenge of the current event that was happening right at that time. It was really neat, and it definitely had a lasting impression on what I knew was going to be a great career for Kaple. A few things that come to mind when you think of Kaple certainly are that he's student-centered, he makes science come to life, like I said, he's a team player, he's there for students, he goes above and beyond, he's a role model, he has high expectations, and he has an incredible work ethic. He's passionate about teaching and learning. It doesn't stop in the classroom. He is extremely involved. And one of the things that Kaple did for us last year, as you remember, our Liptub that we actually did last year as a school, it was a year-long production. Well, Kaple and one of our other teachers were the two masterminds behind not only the idea, but all of the organization, the choreographer, the choreography and everything down to the minute, and, sorry, excuse me, down to the second of that production, and it was something that really did make a lasting impression for our building, a positive impression. He chose the song for us, and the best thing about that was that it was an example of who Kaple really is. He came to me, and the three of us, Tisa Locke, who was his co-conspirator with our Liptub, came to me and said, "We want to choose this song because of the message. It is a message that is so appropriate for middle school. The message in the song is unwritten. It's about students coming into our building in sixth grade, and we wanted to play it for our sixth graders and having their stories be unwritten." On top of that, he's choreographed Last Spring's Musical at Thomas High School, and he's doing this Spring's Musical as well. Stuck in the Middle at our school, and also he's worked with Women's Choir, after-school choir at Thomas. He's coached Modified Cross Country. He's been a regular chaperone for us on our Washington DC trip with our eighth graders. He was able to, with his connections at the U of R, he brought the U of R Yellow Jackets to some of our PBIS assemblies, two of them, and he's also served on our Home Room Committee. When I asked one of his colleagues to just jot a couple sentences down and kind of summarize what they think of Kaple, this is what one of your colleagues wrote. "Kaple is a remarkable teacher who has a special knack for making connections with students. He holds the bar high, and they work hard to reach it. He is one of the most positive people I know, and he always has a kind word for colleagues and students. He takes genuine interest in their lives." That definitely summarizes Kaple, and I am so proud to bring him here tonight. And now I also know that Mark wants to say a few words.
Thank you, Board. I just want to add to that a couple things. One, I guess the word that I would surmise in my work with Kaple, and by the way, Kaple and I came here at Webster just about the same time, so I felt like I've grown with him, as we've been both as administrator and teacher. I would say Kaple is a lifelong learner. Look at what he's done over the last, how many years of education for him? He's been, become, or almost became a doctor. How close were you to being or going into the profession?
Yeah, I just had to do a residency.
So, but he changed that direction, realizing that the dream of being a teacher, and here he is with us today. He's been at Willink, he's been at Spry. Every time we've talked to Kaple about things we need, Kaple's been the one to stand up to the plate and do that for children. He is definitely a lifelong learner in that respect. And now, he has relearned physics, and has come, and he's working in our physics classes, and by the way, the teachers love him, the kids love him. And we're starting, we're going to start calling it the Kaple Effect, because we feel like our attendance and our numbers in physics is going to go through the roof with Kaple working with him. So he's a fantastic person, a fantastic mentor, and a great scientist for our kids to really watch and see, and I'm very proud to be here, sitting next to him, as he receives his tenure. Kaple, here's your tenure.
Oh, thank you.
This is the letter.
Wow, it's like overwhelming. To the board and Mrs. Bavard, everyone, thank you. It's funny, I was thinking back, kind of this week, even before today, I was like, wow, I've been here three years. I remember starting here on like February 1st, three years ago. It was the first day of second semester, and I remember thinking after just like that first week, I remember telling my family, my friends, and I just had like the best amazing first week. The kids were amazing, yeah, it was stressful, and trying to be in the classroom till eight o'clock at night, being like, what do I do? But I remember thinking, this is like exactly where I will spend the rest of my career if I can, and I plan on it. I mean, it's, I can't believe I'm still here. I work with amazing, amazing colleagues, and every day I come in, I love coming into work, I still love coming into work. There are challenging days, but even on the most challenging days, there's always a reward, and the kids are that reward, because even the most challenging kids somehow reward you by the end of the day. And I think that's also a testament to the work that you all do with the faculty in this district and the kids in this district. So thank you so much to all that you do to this district and for the kids. I think it's amazing. The kids I work with, whether it's seventh grade, eighth grade, 11th grade, 12th grade, or even the kids that like I just had rehearsal with two hours ago with the musical, they never cease to amaze me. It's just amazing every day, seeing those kids. I love seeing them. It's, I don't have kids of my own, so they are my kids that I consider my own kids. I thank you to all the administrators I've worked with and I'm currently working with at Thomas. They're all amazing, and especially to Brian and Mark, who I know have gone way beyond out of their way for the past couple years to make sure that I'm here tonight. I know they've done so much. I think about it all the time. It never goes unforgotten, and I thank you. I can't thank you two enough for everything you've done for me, and it's just an amazing experience working here, and I can't wait to finish my whole career here. So thank you.
We have a couple gifts for you. Real quick. And we have a science book, an Einstein here for you.
I thought he needed a good mentor in science. Since he's going to physics, I thought this was appropriate.
We have a... Oh, yeah. It's time.
See? Right there.
Einstein, sign it, yeah. We know you love coffee. There's a little coffee gift.
I drink coffee.
And when Mark and I went shopping, we thought, you know, we got to have candy, got to have candy. Well, we went over to Wegmans, everything is all in heart shapes, but we didn't want to go with the heart shapes. We decided to go with just some, some very healthy, because we know you're a health nut, too, extra dark chocolate. So there you go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Board.
Thank you so much.
Hi, everybody. We are very, John and I are very proud to recommend tenure for Mr. Mark Schickel as our Director of Math and Science, and as, not math and science, Science and Tech. And as Mark alluded to, he started three years ago. He came to us from Williamson, where he was an assistant principal, and before that, he was a science teacher for about 10 years, I think, right? 10 or 11 years?
More.
Yeah. And he taught a variety of different levels. And as you have seen, as the board has seen during Mark's presentations to the board, Mark gets really excited about science, and he is proud to be a science nerd. He certainly does take science and makes it very exciting for, I think, his colleagues, and certainly for the teachers that he works with. And I know he's been working with technology now for approximately a year and a half, and they are feeling the same way that your science colleagues are feeling as well. So we are, it's been a fast three years. Hopefully, it's gone fast for you, but we certainly appreciate all the work that you've done, the passion that you bring to the position, and certainly the commitment to learning and the commitment to our children here in Webster. So we'd like to say thank you, and also recommend you for tenure to the Board of Education. And I'm not sure if John has something to say.
One of the things that stands out about Mark is he's endlessly or ceaselessly seeking opportunities, which we've seen, to expand both at the elementary and the middle and the high school level for students within and outside the classroom to explore science. And on a personal note, I just would like to thank Mark, you know, coming into a new district, you're always looking around, and, you know, we talk about Webster cares and Webster being proud, and, you know, he is a particular person that stands out, that, you know, has welcomed me to come onboard, and, you know, I thank him for that and for willing to put up with all of the questions I ask him at times, and he's been very responsive to feedback. And I know he really, he also has a deep passion for all students and looking for opportunities to expand career tech opportunities and connections with our partners and universities and colleges. So I thank you for all the opportunities that you provide to our students, and personally, I thank you for helping me come onboard in Webster. So thank you.
And before Mark says, before Mark says a few words, Mark, we also, John and I got you a gift, and we were, we looked at each other this morning, and we're like, let's see, two guys giving another guy a gift. We're just not, we're not sure how this is going to work. We didn't want to do flowers, you know, we were, and truth be told, as normally it happens, Adele saved the day for John and I. So if you could open up, open up that, and you'll see just how much Adele cares.
Oh, very nice. Thank you. Thank you. I actually, I know it's my tenure night, but I want to thank everyone who has worked with me up until this point. One of the things I feel like in this district is I've never had the seamless opportunities to learn, and I don't know if people know me around me, but I'm willing to reflect constantly on the work that I do, and I've worked with some fantastic people. Jan, Linda, Barb, Scott, who's not with us anymore, and now John, and Carm, and Adele, and the board. I feel like I have constantly surrounded by the most impressive people in this district. It's one of the best districts I've worked with, and one that I want to stay in, because I want to constantly learn and get better for kids and make this the best district we can. Thank you for your time and opportunities, and also, I know my wife is in the audience, and I wanted to thank her, because there are nights like this where I'm away from her and the children, and as John knows and a lot of you know, it's hard to be away from the kids, and she constantly is helping me out, taking care of them, and making life good at home while I'm not there. So thank you to you all, and thank you to Kristen for helping me out. Thanks.
Just remember, Mark, it's more than stem, it's steam. I'm going to get that out in there.
I think John just gave me an article this morning that said the same thing.
All right, we move on to our instructional reports, and this, tonight will be on special education, so we have a whole bunch of people.
Good evening. We are very excited to be here tonight to share some of the work of the Special Education Department, and I'd like to introduce our team. Colleen Armstrong, Jen Dowdell, who's our lead teacher for elementary, Kim Ganley, who's our Assistant Technology Specialist, Marcia Barber is our lead teacher at Willink, Dan Marcello is our lead teacher at Thomas, and Lauren Polito is our lead teacher at Spry. We have highlighted many of our key initiatives and achievements in our written report, but tonight, we will be focusing on the use of technology to assist and support students in achieving the expectations of the Common Core learning standards. We are committed to unlocking talents and knowledge from students' minds and to setting high expectations for all students. Commitment, collaboration, and the belief in possibilities is critical as we prepare students for success after high school.
Throughout the year, we've been focusing on the Board of Education goal number one, preparing all students for college and career readiness. Part of that expectation involves the implementation of the Common Core learning standards. The standards require all students to demonstrate higher-order thinking around skills through reading, writing, listening, and speaking. The question we often hear is what are the implications for students receiving special education services? The expectation is that they are challenged to excel within the Common Core. There are three key ways that we can focus the additional supports and services students receive so that they are prepared to meet these demands. First, by providing instructional strategies to support student engagement, by presenting information in multiple ways, and allowing students to access and express what they know in a variety of ways. Next, we can provide accommodations, as long as they do not alter the standards or lower the expectations. Next, we can provide accommodations, as long as they do not alter the standards or lower the expectations. And finally, by utilizing assistive technology devices and services will enable to, enable students to access the standards. By working under a growth mindset and grounding our work in our core beliefs, we'll be able to meet this challenge. While the work incorporates all the core beliefs, tonight we are highlighting students first and collaboration. As we've said, college and career readiness applies to all our students. We all need to work collaboratively to look outside the box and focus on using students' strengths to design instruction when students are not achieving. By focusing on what students can do, we value each individual in our community. As we work with teams at every level, we need to be interdependent in our approach to achieve the expected outcomes. Tonight, you will see how special education, ELA, and technology departments are working together to identify powerful strategies and tools that empower students and prepare them for life after high school.
In Webster, collaborative, data-driven conversations occur through the PLC at the building level where the focus begins with individual student needs and at the district level where the focus is on identifying technology tools, instructional practices, and the professional development needs of staff, students, and families. Through this process, we gather evidence and analyze data from AMES Web and WEA state assessments and such to identify and implement the use of appropriate strategies and assistive technology to support our students. We then monitor their progress and make changes as needed.
Central to the Common Core is fostering each student's ability to communicate what they know and understand. However, some students with autism, speech, or motor impairments find communication difficult. We utilize a variety of technology, some as common as a smart board, to iPods, iPads, and Dynavox communication devices. For one of our kindergarten students pictured here, having an iPad with communication board software has allowed her to effectively communicate and participate in a regular kindergarten classroom. While one young boy who moved up to Willink this year to a much bigger school environment, now he has an iPod Touch to better unders, be better understood by all the new people in his life at school. Out in the college setting at St. John Fisher, we have students using the iPod Touch to provide video modeling and prompting of skills like interviewing as well as job skills. This technology is helping them to be much more independent than ever before. These devices are selected and customized by teams of teachers to overcome obstacles to engaging meaningfully in their education. These technologies provide greater access to curriculum, social interaction, and life potential as students reach higher toward college and career readiness.
A part of the Common Core implementation is providing effective interventions to help students close gaps and achieve. Collaboration with ELA and technology has resulted in System 44 and/or Read 180 provided for students needing remediation and reinforcement. The programs are used with middle school students and small groups of students at high school and elementary. Using adaptive technology, students receive systematic, research-based instruction with multiple points of entry. The computer portion of the programs gives immediate feedback adjusted as students respond. Individual repeated practice helps build fluency and technology and leveled text give students control over process and pacing. The technology provides multiple examples, repetition over time, and assessment and progress monitoring, delivering data for differentiation. Students enter the program at levels determined by computerized pretests in phonics and short comprehension passion passages. As they progress through units, they practice phonics skills, word strategies, sight words, and vocabulary background information building. Students rotate through stations, the computer, small group skill instruction, and literature and writing with tests taken three times a year to show growth.
Assistive technology does not replace a student's responsibility to learn, nor a teacher's responsibility to teach, but it helps those students with reading and writing difficulties access grade-level text and demonstrate their understanding and knowledge. Assistive technology can level the playing field so that every student is able to work to the high expectations of the Common Core learning standards. It empowers students to make meaning of challenging texts and convey their ideas in writing. Read Write Gold is a computer program that is available to all secondary and some elementary students in Webster. It is a powerful tool that includes multiple features that can be customized to each user. The program interface is a simple toolbar, much like what we use in our web browsers. The toolbar is a one-stop shop that can read webpages and documents out loud, predict what a student wants to type in Microsoft Word, translate foreign languages, and define words. It even provides research tools that help gather information on the web and create bibliographies. It works on laptops, desktops, and tablets. Students can request access to the program for their personal computers. Read Write Gold opens a pathway of learning, relieves frustration and anxiety. It can increase motivation and engagement with school for students who struggle with disabilities that impact their learning.
As you have seen, we are using multiple instructional technologies and methods that assist our students in achieving the expectations of the Common Core learning standards. Today's students need to be able to interact with rich, complex, and rigorous text from a variety of sources in order to be ready for college, career, and life. Consider this. According to national data, most high school literature and textbooks are written at the 10th grade level. After high school, our students are, can expect to encounter text written at even higher levels. For example, college materials or the text one might encounter in the military or such related fields can be written around the 12th grade level. Texts for personal use, such as the owner's manual for your smartphone or other electronic devices, can be above the 12th grade level, while entry-level job materials can range anywhere from 12th grade and beyond. When we think about the world we are preparing today's students for, we need to recognize that there will never be a one-size-fits-all answer as to how they become independent and successful with life and career. Therefore, we need to work across all disciplines in order to find the right strategies and tools to work for each student.
We've already seen tremendous benefit and results from the use of technology with our students. One particular student comes to mind whose story could be the story of many of our students. This young man struggled so significantly with reading and writing throughout elementary school. He spent many years in a special class setting and he didn't see himself as someone who could achieve. As teachers began using, began exploring the use of technology with him, he shined. He was able to demonstrate his knowledge and ideas and he showed that he could comprehend, despite his difficulties, getting words off the page and putting his thoughts down on paper through to traditional means. His intelligence came through loud and clear when we gave him the tools to unlock his true potential. He will graduate from high school next year and that would not have been possible without the use of technology. When we presume competence, we put students first. We are committed to providing students with the tools and opportunities to achieve the high expectations of the Common Core learning standards and to be college and career ready. Thank you very much for your time and we welcome your questions.
Board member? Fritz, was anything?
You know, education is so departmentalized. It's separated by subject area. So, thank you for bringing this to, to my attention and to all of our attentions because we're surrounded by technology. And with, with special education, as, as students are going into more classes and there, there, there's more collaboration, if, if it's not brought to the forefront, you tend to forget about it. You tend to forget that technology and what it can be used for and the importance of it being used within special education. So, just, I just want to thank you for bringing that to our attention.
No questions? Thank you.
I'm very excited by the use of technology and I'm becoming more and more aware of how, the difference it makes. So, I thank you for your proactiveness in, in using that with our students. You always take such good care of them. Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, is there any tie-in or correlation with Read 180 and AMES Web?
Is there any specific tie-in because they assess some different skills?
That you can use AMES Web to identify students that might be a good participant in then taking further assessment to see if Read 180 or System 44 might be an appropriate intervention?
So, do our students do both AMES Web and 180?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Right now, our focus is at middle school where we started the program this year.
Okay. Thank you. This does require action. May we entertain a motion to accept the special education report? Thank you. Second? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, everybody.
It was six solve. We now move into our superintendent's report?
Yes. It's been a wonderful evening so far, hasn't it? Between our care report and our special ed report, we've been seeing things that are, that kind of impact all of us because we can see the progress of students so tangibly in the reports that we've had tonight. I want to begin my report with just a reminder. We've been trying to publicize this very strongly in the community. If you are a parent with a student coming into kindergarten, we are celebrating the fact that you will have full-day kindergarten next year and we're going to ask you to register. Our week of registration is next week, the week after next? Next week, February 12th, 13th, and 14th. So, there are, there's information in the local media. You can go on our website. We're posting this, as you can see right now on the screen. So, parents are asked to register February 12th, 13th, and 14th from 9:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. And February 13th from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. So, we have during the day as well as one evening for kindergarten registration. So, if you're a kindergarten parent, we ask you to come on down and register with us and we're really looking forward to meeting you and getting ready for our Full Day K program. So, moving on, want to talk about our Webster students now, our Webster artists because they're being recognized for some very inspired work. Student artists from both Webster Thomas and Webster Schrader have much to celebrate. Twenty-nine students at Webster Thomas and 25 Webster Schrader students are winners in this year's Scholastic Art Awards. This is at the regional level. These students' work are at the top 10% of all pieces submitted for this competition and there were over 100,000 students from across the country that made submissions. So, this was, this is to the northeast region at large. All the gold key winners will be adjudicated at the national level in the near future. And as you know, we, we will report on that as we get that information. And tonight, we're celebrating all of these winners in the Scholastic Art Competition. And while we're on the topic of art, the Rochester Fingerlaitz Art Exhibition started a new tradition of recognizing art teachers in a variety of career levels. Awards are sponsored by the School of Art in recognition of the outstanding, excellent work our teachers do day in and day out. So, we have two teachers that were recognized in this area. Our very own Bill Stevens is being recognized with the Award of Community Mentor and Teacher Award. And Todd Stahl received the Mid-Career Award from this organization. So, congratulations to both those teachers. You can't have excellence in a program without wonderful teachers. And yet, another opportunity for Webster's art students to shine is being held at the gallery at the Arts and Cultural Council for Greater Rochester. Now, this is something new that we're trying in collaboration with some other districts and we have a poster here up on the screen. It's in celebration of Youth, Youth Art Month and we're collaborating with Westerone Quaid and Penfield. And we're actually going to display our students' work in the gallery. So, high school artwork from our three school districts, Penfield, Westerone Quaid, and Webster, will be displayed for the month of March. And there's an opening reception being held on March 1st from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. The gallery is located at 277 North Goodman Street, across from the Village Gate. And it's gonna be a wonderful way to kick off Youth Art Month with the Webster Art Students. So, if you want to attend that, March 1st from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., there's gonna be some refreshments and the superintendents of those districts will be there. We'll be saying some nice stuff about our students. And the best part is you get to see fantastic artwork like you see on this poster that we've displayed. So, we'll have that on our website as well if you're interested in celebrating with us. Congratulations also go out to Plank Norris Kevin Sayers. He's a phys ed teacher for us recently named the 2013 Central Western Zone Elementary Physical Education Teacher of the Year. Kevin was honored for his dedication and passion for teaching physical education. And if you're a frequent attender to our sports athletic contests, you'll see Kevin around quite a bit because he's always around, he's always supporting the kids, he's always chaperoning, he is so involved with our programs. And well-deserved, Kevin, for this honor. Congratulations go out to you. I applaud Spry Middle School for hosting a winter fun festival to honor Webster's first responders for their service to our community. First responders and their family members are invited to Spry for a free fun-filled afternoon of activities on Wednesday, February 20th. Now, this is school break, so we won't be in school, but we're inviting all first responders and their families Wednesday, February 20th from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the school as our way of saying thanks to this tremendous community resource. So, thank you, Spry, for hosting that. And there's more information on that on our website as well. And finally, the last update I have is going back to, I'm just reiterating what our student liaisons have told you about the Webster Thomas versus Webster Schrader Faculty Basketball Ball Game. Yes, it is true that the $5,000 has been raised and it is true that some people will look very differently after the contest than they do before the contest. So, you gotta come and see it for yourself. And this is to benefit the Kachupka, Chiperini, Hofstadter, Scardino families, and the entire West Webster Fire Department. So, come on down Saturday night for this game at Webster Schrader. And then, it's my report.
But you'll be keeping your hair?
I'll be keeping my hair, but I will be taking part in a small role and you've just gotta come and see what I do. So, that's it.
Thank you, Adele. We'll now move into Board Business. And we'll take a first look at the 2013-2014 school calendar. Carmen, anything special that comes out on that?
We are actually, we'll be starting school with teachers in August. The last, the last week in August, on the 28th and 29th, we'll have two superintendent's conference days. And the kids will actually begin, instead of the Wednesday after Labor Day, our students will begin on Tuesday after Labor Day. And as you, as you look throughout the, the calendar, we actually have, Regents Week will actually go to the very last week in June. And that hasn't happened for a few years. So, graduation next year in 2014 will actually be the weekend before July 4th. And normally, it's two weekends before July 4th. I think those are the, those are the big, the big changes for the upcoming school calendar.
Thank you, Carmen. This, okay.
So, for planning purposes, the 28th and the 29th, will those be the opening day ceremonies?
Yes, the 28th will be the opening day ceremony.
And just a comment, I don't know if it's me, but I can't tell the difference between the yellow and the gold.
Really?
Oh, you mean the parent-teacher one and the conference?
I'll give you a better copy.
Yeah, the gold's in November.
Oh, wait. Lisa, are you looking on your, on the electronic version? Okay. Okay.
May we entertain a motion to accept this school calendar as a first reading? And Fritz's second? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Board members, you've had a chance to look at the transportation contract. Carmen, is there anything in particular you'd like to mention there?
I think Jim and I are very pleased to bring you a ratified from the Transportation Unit, a ratified contract that runs through June of 2015. And the, as you, as you have been well aware, it has been a lot of hard work from, from both sides. And we think it's a, it's a fair contract. It certainly is something that... It certainly is something that is fiscally responsible for our district and the taxpayers of Webster. And recommendation, our recommendation is that the board adopt this or ratify this contract.
Any questions from the board? May we entertain a motion to ratify the transportation contract? All in favor? Motion carries. Jim, would you talk to us about the tax sursary?
Yes, tonight in front of you, you have a resolution for tax sursary. This is a settlement of a tax sursary claim on 1350 Sweets Corner in Webster. The town attorney and the school attorney, Joe Shields, were together on this and recommend this approval. Joe Shields has drawn up the resolution, and it just requires approval by the Board of Education.
May we entertain a motion to accept the resolution? Thank you. All in favor? Motion carries. And the Thomas Maloney Memorial Scholarship Fund?
Yes, the next piece in front of you is the Memorial Scholarship Fund. Probably about three or four months ago, you might remember that we had a discussion around this. The Maloney family had come to the district and inquired about changing the concept of the scholarship that was first approved by the board in 1994 and had been given out through the 2009-10 school year. We, both Scott Morris and Gary Tyrone and myself met with the Maloney family, and they wanted to look for a different use of that. And they identified the baseball as something of, that Tom Maloney was a very big part of when he went to school here. And they had a passion to do something that would bring some type of equipment or remembrance to programs at Webster. And together, we came up with a list of baseball equipment, new pitching machines, pitching mounds for both the Thomas and the Schrader facilities. There was just over $31,000 left in the account, and they've identified a list of purchases. That's on the back page of the memo. Two retractable batting cages, three pitching mounds, and three pitching machines. And in conversations with their attorney and with their auditors, we wanted to make sure that this was doable by the board. And as long as the board does approve this recommendation to change the purpose of the fund, we can move forward with these purchases and meet the family's needs. And I would recommend approval.
May we entertain a motion to honor this request? Okay. Thank you. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We have a first reading on Policy 2050, which is on the Parent-Student-Teacher Organization. Carmen, any special thing to mention on that?
No. As you look at your, at your copy, there is, one sentence has been taken out and replaced with another, and the sentence that it has been replaced with is actually consistent with the mission that is from the National PTA S.A. organization. That's why we added it.
Thank you. May we entertain a motion to accept the first reading of this policy?
The, our PTA, they are not. Right, to their nation, yeah, to their vision, to their mission statement. That's a, I will certainly be able to tomorrow. Yeah, actually, that's a great idea, Lisa. I will reach out to Cindy Barron tomorrow. Just let her know.
Do you want to move them all together? Well, technically, the other ones are in old business, so. Can we entertain a motion on 2050 with the amended wording? Just going to check with PTA on. Okay.
Right. Yep.
The motion should just be to accept first reading of 2050.
Correct.
And the second? Thank you, Fritz. All in favor? Motion carries. We now move into old business. Carmen, we have like, what is it, five or six second readings?
We have five second readings. They have, they have not changed since the first reading. I'd be happy to go through each one if you'd like. It's up to you.
Is it necessary, board?
Okay. So, no changes from the first read. You can move them all together if you'd like.
Thank you. May we entertain a motion to accept the five second readings of Policies 2010 through 4070? Thank you. All in favor? Motion carries. We now move into our board reports. Would anyone like to give a school liaison report? Okay. Tom, do you have anything from Steering Committee?
Steering Committee, I was not able to attend.
Okay. No, no problem. What's next on Legislative? Lisa or Tom? Okay. I'll give a quick, well, actually, it's going to be a little bit longer, report on labor relations. Last week, Jody gave a report on the personal changes that have occurred in Monroe County public schools since the year 2006. And during that time, the average school budget in Monroe County has increased 2.6% a year. The total number of jobs eliminated has been 6.1% out of all of Monroe County. There are over 800 fewer teachers and over 800 fewer support personnel in that time. Student enrollment has fallen by 6.1%, so the job eliminations has equaled the student decrease. Free and reduced lunches has increased by 24.2% in the county. Pretty much, every district has seen changes in their program, some aspect of their program. It could be by eliminating classes. It could have been by combining some academic programs. It could have been by changing extracurricular or sports opportunities. It could have been reducing the number of counselors, the enrichment program teachers, reducing the ratio of special ed aides, special education aides, and/or classroom aides. So, there has been a, a big change there. And one of the things that Jody pointed out was that when you lose a public-sector job, it impacts the private sector. And her data indicates that when you lay off a public-sector person, when you eliminate one of their jobs, .67% or .6, the equivalent is .67% to a private-sector jobs are lost. Which is interesting, when people say, you know, "Let's get rid of all public-sector jobs", you're actually eliminating your private-sector jobs. Because when you reduce the number of public-sector jobs, you're reducing the public sector's purchasing, because fewer employers are buying. So, it was interesting, just to compare what the average is going on in the county to what we're kind of doing here in Webster. And that was the labor report. Information Exchange will be meeting next week. Executive Committee, Adele and I went last night. And there were just two documents I want to bring up to you that we were looking at adopting. One was dealing with IEP diplomas. Presently, the SED considers a student earning an IEP diploma as a dropout. And this document is asking SED to respect both the federal accountability guidelines that we're using and the student receiving this credential by simply not counting them in the graduation cohort. Oh, this is the one. Right. Okay. And the second document dealt with student-staff and campus safety. And this document was asking the New York State Legislature to consider funding gaps that undermine the social service efforts to help students at risk, to provide effective services for identifying, treating people diagnosed with mental illness, that there are gaps that exist in the New York State penal law, and to address those, and to provide schools with the financial resources needed to put systems in place that will allow for increased campus security. And those two documents were accepted, and hopefully, will be able to be used for this Saturday's Breakfast with the legislators. And that's basically what happened at executive session. Okay. Tom, do you have anything from the NISBA?
Yes, a couple of things.
Participated along with Jody.
Siegel at the Federal Relations Network, and that was quite a meeting, really trying to push for the Elementary and Secondary Education Act reauthorization, or NCLB reauthorization. There is, I'm trying to remember now the senator's name, but he is planning to retire at the end of his term. He really has a passion to do this, and he's getting some bipartisan support. So, there's going to be, hopefully, a lot of work on it. And that was reiterated by both Senators Schumer and Gillibrand at the meeting we had with them down in Washington. And then, along with Jody, was able to participate in visiting the offices of several of our legislators. Much smaller contingent than last year because of the way they redistrict. Basically, all of our county is covered by Representative Slaughter, Congresswoman Slaughter. And so, we only had like three or four visitations to make. It was at the time of year, though, when the actual representatives weren't there, but we did meet with their chiefs of staff and education specialists, which sometimes is the better way to go, because they're the last ones to whisper in the ear before they go vote on something. And so, we spent a lot of time with them. They were leisurely meetings, went 30 to 45 minutes apiece spaced out, so we had, had a good sessions with each one of them. In addition, earlier this week, hopefully, some of you have received these at home. They may have come in the mail, and this lays out the legislative priorities. I've had a chance to check that off against Monroe County's, which is going to be covered, and they're about 98% lockstep with one another. So, our state program and legislative issues reflect, of course, very much what we understand here in Monroe County as our major problems need to be addressed. And hopefully, we will be able to have a good conversation this weekend with some of our representatives. And lastly, on behalf of New York State School Boards, I'd like to present the Mastery Award Level to our own president, Michael Suffolatto. He has reached 250 points in the new Leadership University for School Board Members. It's the third of four levels. So, he's received and accomplished over 250 of the education points towards the lifetime achievement of 500. There's the nice Suitable for Framing School Board U Mastery Certificate, Padfolio, and a lapel thing. Mike, congratulations to you. Congratulations. That ends my report.
Janine, anything on audit? Okay. I did receive a report from Ray Wagner, and he said there were 15 copies sent to the district on extracurricular?
Yes. They'll be coming, we just got them in the last day or so. So, they'll be coming, well, that doesn't go to the Audit Committee. But we, we will be scheduling an audit meeting, because we have the follow-up on the risk assessment and conversation about the upcoming risk assessment. So, I met with Paul last Friday, and we'll be setting up some time to get together with the Audit Committee. And the audit report that you're talking about will come. And we don't have another meeting until like the 21st of March, because our next meeting on the 7th is the budget meeting. So, that report will come to you then.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Saturday, there are two legislative events going on. There's the Monroe County School Board Legislative Breakfast at the University, RIT Conference Center. And Tom will be attending that on our behalf and actually taking part in that. He'll be introducing some people. And then, Senator Nizolio is hosting a series of forums with different districts, and I'll be attending the one in Kenan-Dagwa on behalf of Webster and be participating in that. So, we're trying to cover both sides of the legislative agenda for the weekend. And we hope that the weather cooperates. We're not so sure, but we hope so.
Thank you. We now move into our consent agenda. Board members, you've had the opportunity to examine it. The consent agenda includes the minutes and personnel actions and recommendations on the committee on Special Education. May we entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda? Thank you. All in favor? Motion carries. Before we entertain a motion to adjourn, I would just like to remind the board that our next meeting is a budget meeting, March 7th. With that being said, may we entertain a motion to adjourn? Thank you. All in favor? Good night, everyone. We're adjourned.